This is, there have been a series of conversations that have already taken place. There are more planned. This is a continuing process to get to the out, the best outcome for what will happen as it relates to Lower Lake. There are again a number of stakeholders that are very much interested in this outcome. We have some things that we've talked about internally that I would, I've asked you guys to take a look at. So I think the public engagement piece of this, as we learn more, as the facts become more apparent, more clear and certain as to the path we need to be on, that we will share that with the public in a timely manner respectively. Again, thank you, Mr. Markoles.
Thank you. Just want to add one thing on what you said. If you've discussed this internally, it's really out of the view of the public and you are a public body, should be discussing these things externally so that all these fine people here can be part of the conversation. Thank you for your time and have a good day.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Continue here. I will now go to our chief executive officers report.
Thank you, President Brown and members of the board. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
On July fifteenth and sixteenth, Jeremy Short, our Director of Human Resources and Jason Pissar, our Manager of Talent Acquisition, participated in the Great Lakes Commission's Water Workforce convening in Grand Rapids, Michigan. So this two, two-day workforce development roundtable brought together industry leaders to explore strategies on strengthening the water talent pipeline. The roundtable covered topics like attracting and growing talent, coordinating across organizations and sectors, and then mitigating turnover and the loss of institutional knowledge. This inaugural roundtable marks a really important step for regional collaboration, and we look forward to continuing to work with the Great Lakes Commission and other folks across the Midwest on this ongoing talent question. Then on July eighteenth, we joined the Village of Brooklyn Heights and colleagues on the Cuyahoga Area of Concern for a ribbon cutting for the West Creek Stabilization Project. At seventeen million dollars, this is our largest regional stormwater management program project date. Sixty-five hundred linear feet of restored stream. The project improves fish passage and enhances habitat, expands flood plains, and protects local infrastructure. The project was jointly funded by the District, US EPA's Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, and ODOT. These partners, as well as colleagues from Ohio EPA, all of you see, can see here, the Ohio Lake Erie Commission and Cuyahoga County joined us in this ribbon cutting. I especially want to recognize Anne Schilling, the watershed team leader for this area, who led us all through the organization for this event, as well as colleagues across the district. And then as we are in August, I wanted to share some, some information about our intern experience this summer. So this year, our HR team refocused the program to ensure that our interns not only gained valuable work experience, which has always existed with the intern experience here, but also professional development, networking opportunities, and exposure across the organization. So with that, HR put together a great summer, including professional development workshops on networking, unconscious bias, effective communications, tours of Easterly and its tunnel dewatering pump station, our Fair Hill MLK Green Infrastructure Site, the lab, and many other opportunities to meet folks and learn about different careers at the district and with our partner organizations. So we celebrated National Intern Day on July thirty-first, and I definitely want to thank Jeremy and the HR team for the attention and care that they brought to the experience of our interns this summer and wish all of our interns best of luck in their future endeavors. And then finally, President Brown, a few awards for our finance team. Congratulations to Jackie Williams, our Manager of Procurement Services. And the entire for receiving the thirtieth annual achievement of excellence in procurement for 2025 from the National Procurement Institute. This award is earned by public and nonprofit agencies that demonstrate a commitment to procurement excellence, as we certainly do. We were one of two in Ohio and one of twenty-three special districts to receive this award, and we have won this award every year since 2015. And I'll just leave it at that. And congratulations to Melinda Marqu, manager of accounting and reporting, and her team for being awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for our annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending December thirty-first, 2023. This is the twenty-ninth year, consecutive year, the district has achieved this prestigious award. So thank you, President Brown.
Thank you very much. You know, it occurs to me as I was looking at the stream restoration project that you showed us a moment ago, that we're actually pretty good at that kind of work.
Very good.
And the fact that we have a number of those restorations that we've done to expand flood plain, acquire property, redevelop it for that purpose, and have brought relief to longstanding problems of either surface or basement flooding in our area of concern in terms of our service area. I'm just wondering if at some point it makes sense to perhaps put something together that kind of depicts some of those successes that we've had.
Yeah.
In that regard, because in some respects, when we talk about some of these things from time to time, depending on where our people act like we've never done this before. And so because we are good at it and the outcomes have been good in a, in a very positive way for residents and property owners in the adjacent areas to those improvements, I think, I think that's an opportunity for us. I know my colleague here knows it firsthand, you know, I, I know. One thing I learned about this business is water does flow downhill.
That's right.
And so when, when we had a number of concerns with Parma, Parma Heights, and it's all related to Big Creek, and they were, of course, getting it first, the presumption it usually is, when we have a storm, best, best way to defend ourselves is to get it out of our community as quick as we can. And sometimes that doesn't work out for folks down the hill. And so I just think that there are some opportunities to tell some really success stories about what we've done in terms of resource commitment, project, delivery, project outcome, cost, that we've contributed to really mitigating a lot of stormwater-related, stormwater precipitated events in the region, so.
Absolutely, President Brown, and I think Jean and her team coordinating with watersheds can get those stories put together and out.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I, don't need. Okay, let's go to then action items. Let's start with authorization to advertise, beginning with request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with our advice code section sixty-one nineteen point one oh for the George J. McMonagle Security and Lighting Enhancement Project with an estimated probable construction cost of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Also request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with our advice code section sixty-one nineteen point one oh for the C M S Upgrade and Relocation Project with an estimated probable construction cost of two million five hundred thousand dollars.
Move for adoptions of resolutions one eighty-three and one eighty-four twenty-five.
Motion by Mayor Lai.
Second.
I'll take Ms. Chambers as a second question. Just if you could, on one eighty-four twenty-five, did note that there was a comment in the right of about not awarding if it was more than twenty percent of the engineer's estimate cost, and then also understanding that this is a part of the renewable energy facility. And it looks like we're starting to see parts of the operation itself beginning to exceed its useful life, so we're replacing original equipment in some respects, though. If you could just speak to that issue and maybe what we might expect in the future. Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board. This SENS upgrade and relocation project is actually part of our last and final PLC upgrade project in the REF Renewable Energy Facility. We are expediting the continuous emissions system monitoring that we have for our air quality permitting and so forth. Some of the equipment is starting to see end of useful life, as you mentioned, and in need of upgrades sooner than the rest of the PLCs that we will be coming to the board next year for approval to replace those swell. Under this project, we also be making enhancements for our O and M personnel so they can access the equipment a lot easier and get to the pieces of equipment that they need to work on on a daily basis. We do have a item in the resolution, yes, to award within the twenty percent allowing us that buffer should we see that our bids go over the estimated cost for construction.
I appreciate that explanation. Any other question or comment? There being none then without objection, they're approved.
Solutions. One eighty-four twenty-five.
Thank you. All right, let's do authorization issue request for proposal. One, that's a request for authorization issue in RFP in accordance with our advice code, chapter sixty-one nineteen for professional services and software for any RSD IT Service Management IT Asset Management Selection and Implementation Project.
Move to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Sulu.
Second.
Uh, second by Mayor Bachi, is there a question? There's no question without objection, it's approved.
Resolution one eighty-five dash.
Thank you. Let's do authorization to purchase. This is a request for authorization to purchase one mini crawler crane from Smiley Lifting Solutions LLC in amount of hundred two thousand five hundred fifty dollars and seven equals from Value Ford Truck Inc. in the amount of seven and fourteen thousand one hundred forty-four dollars as presented for grand total amount of eight hundred sixteen thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars.
Move to adopt resolution one eighty-six dash twenty-five.
Motion by Ms. Chambers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sulu. Is there a question? Just if you could. Eight pieces of equipment, I'm assuming that we're replacing them because they have exceeded useful life, but I see here you got a new piece as well, so let's talk about that.
Yes, good afternoon, President Brown and members of the board. You are correct, most of what we're asking here for here is replacements. Two of the four-by-four utility trucks are, are new additions to the fleet. Those are for our SSMO department, and then the mini crawler crane, and there's a picture of that up there, is also in addition. This is a crane, that, that first picture on the top that shows it in a compact form. This thing is probably three to four feet tall if you're standing next to it, and it helps us access very tight spaces in tunnels on tops of tanks. We currently have two similar pieces of equipment, one at Southerly and one at Westerly. This is for Easterly. We've, we've attempted to share the one that we have at Westerly between Westerly and Easterly, and we use it a lot, and there's times when we need it at both locations, so we're requesting to purchase another one of these.
Okay. Other questions? All right, there being none then without objection, it's approved.
Resolution one eighty-six dash.
Thank you. Let's do authorization to enter into agreement. Several of those, beginning with course authorization enter into professional services agreement Kurtz with Kurtz Brothers Inc. Kurtz for the BioSolids Incinerator Ash Beneficial Reuse Program for the Southerly Waste Water Treatment Center for a ten-year term in amount not to exceed seven million four hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, and for Kurtz to pay the district a royalty rate of two dollars and twenty-five cent per ton for ash using the production of existing reuse project with an option to adjust the royalty rate on an annual basis and to establish a royalty rate for each new reuse application ought to be exercised by the CEO at her discretion. Also, a request for authorization enter into a professional services agreement with InfoGen Inc., that's, that's, and Inc., including software for accessibility and web information and services project in amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. Also, request for authorization enter into an agreement with eliminating company, a first energy corporation for relocation of eighteen electrical poles, then the construction side of Mill Creek Restoration near Cricket Lane and Warrensville Heights Project in amount of two hundred thirty-three thousand two hundred twenty dollars and seventy-four cents.
To adopt resolutions, one eighty-seven dash twenty-five through one eighty-nine dash twenty-five.
Motion by Ms. Chambers.
Second.
Second by Mayor Lai. Questions, just if you could, on one eighty-seven twenty-five, ten-year contract Kurtz Brothers, we've been with them for a while on this beneficial reuse program, so if somebody could maybe speak to how that is progressing. I know we have a royalty that we're going to get here, looks like about seventy-four thousand dollars each year, but that's assuming that the royalty rate remains constant. I know that, that does say that if we negotiate it on an annual basis, so can someone speak to that, including the benefits to our environmental footprint?
Yes, President Brown, Robin Halpern, our Deputy Director of Watershed Programs, has been leading the effort, the district's efforts in the beneficial reuse of ash, so I'd like to ask her to come up and, and explain a little bit more.
Okay.
All right. Good afternoon, President Brown and members of the board. You are correct that we've been working with Kurtz since 2018 to beneficially reuse all of the ash generated by the district. We've done this through shorter-term contracts, two- or three-year contracts, and this time we are asking to enter into a longer-term contract because that gives us a lot more opportunities to expand the reuse options that we are currently using. And we will continue revenue sharing, which we have been doing revenue sharing currently. The last rate was one seventy-five, it's now going to be two twenty-five, and we'll negotiate that every year, especially as we bring new reuse options online, we want to be able to negotiate that. So just to kind of highlight what we have been doing with the ash is reusing it as topsoil, that's been the predominant reuse method over the last seven, eight years. We also use smaller amounts as structural fill and three oh four aggregate. And what this longer-term contract is going to allow us to do is explore these options that Kurtz has been working on, but we haven't been able to bring it to fruition with a short-term contract. So one of the two, one, two that I want to point out that are really exciting is this lead remediation material. Kurtz has been working with Ohio State University on a blend that includes our ash that helps neutralize lead in, in soil. So think about all the homes that are lead-contaminated homes that are demolished throughout our area. There's contaminated lead left in the soil. This type of product would help neutralize and bind the lead and reduce exposure to, to lead. So really cool opportunity that they've been working on that we hope to bring to fruition in the next year or two. And then the other one I want to mention is for a long time, we've been talking about low-strength mortar or flowable fill, working to make sure that the product can meet ODOT and City of Cleveland standards, and it does. And we even had a demonstration project, I think it was back like in 2020, where we want to get the, the city on board to be able to allow the ash to be used in the flowable fill that, as you know, is required in any street opening in, in the city of Cleveland. So really exciting opportunities. There's also some opportunities for cement and stone and, and agricultural, agricultural runoff. So this longer-term contract gives us the opportunity to really network these and, and get them into, into use. So talking about what have we, savings have we seen over the last seven years? I just want to reiterate, we have not landfilled any ash at all since prior to 2018, so that's really exciting. Over two hundred thousand tons of ash have gone to Kurtz Brothers. Looking forward, we intend to continue a hundred percent reuse, and that gives us an estimated savings of about fifty percent compared to landfilling. That'll be about nine million dollars over the next ten years. And that also gives us a ninety-two percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions when you compare to landfilling. The nearest landfill is about thirty-five miles away. The primary facility that Kurtz uses is just less than two miles away from, from Southerly, so a lot of potential savings. And as we negotiate new royalty rates, that savings could go, could go up. So in Kurtz's here, if you have any questions for them or for me.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. It was very helpful in understanding where we've been and what we're trying to get to, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Then just to, one eighty-nine twenty-five, just to comment, because I, I read this a little bit, and this is yet another one of those areas that we're mediating that have had historic flooding issues, and it looks like we're entering into an agreement with the first, just we're paying them, relocate, move exposed so that we can do our project, but again, that's another intercept, it's like part of Mill Creek Interceptor, which I don't know how many phases of Mill Creek we've and, and addressed, but Mill Creek has been causing havoc all over our service area. Yet another one of those mitigation projects.
That's correct, President Brown. Good afternoon, members of the board. This is another project in the Mill Creek watershed amongst many that the district and the partners have implemented throughout the years. We've brought this project before the board several times over the past years in terms of voluntary property acquisition, where we've been able to work with the folks that live there in this residential area to voluntarily acquire their properties and make room for Mill Creek and the floodplain access that will greet with this property. This is really the final step of the design and preparation process that we go through both internally and with the public process to basically move those utility poles out of the stream corridor and up onto the right-of-way there so that we can mobilize and execute this project in the coming year or so.
Just, just again, just running out, this is what we do, this is our humble, so thank you. Appreciate it. There were no other questions then without objection, those are approved.
Resolution one eighty-seven.
Thank you. Let's do authorization enter into contract. This is request for authorization enter to a public agreement contract with Mark Lee's Precision Company for the restoration of sludge cake storage bin number three at the Southerly Renewable Energy Facility in amount not to exceed ninety-four thousand six hundred dollars.
Move to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Sulu.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bachi, is there a question? There is no question and without objection, it's approved.
Resolution one ninety dash twenty-five.
Thank you. Let's do authorization of contract modification. This is request, request authorization modify contract number two, two zero zero five eight five five with Sure Construction Company for the southerly chemically enhanced high-rate treatment upgrades project for twenty-five day non-compensatory time extension with no change in the total contract amount.
I'll make the motion, Mr. President.
She by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Ms. Chambers, is there a question? There's no question without objection, it's approved.
Resolution one ninety-one dash twenty-five.
Property-related transactions. A couple of those. Let's start with request for authorization acquire one parcel and it be simple known as permit parcel number four five seven three oh zero four one located at one fifteen thirty-three West Pleasant Valley Road in the city of Parma owned by Alexander S. Kurtz and to be owned by the West Creek Conservancy at the time of transfer to the district necessary for construction maintenance of the SWMP project area six flood and erosion reduction near York and Pleasant Valley Roads project and to allow for the entirety of the payment to be dispersed to Innovative Title and Escrow Services LLC with a total consideration of two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars plus closing costs. Also request for declaration of intent to appropriate two temporary easements at the property, number permit parcel number five forty-four fourteen zero one six located at one twenty-three ninety-five for Kraken Road in the city of Garfield Heights owned by Sure Properties LLC necessary for construction of the renewal of coverted streams to project and to authorize a consideration of seventy-eight thousand nine hundred dollars determined by the fair market value to be deposited with the Cuyahoga County.
To adopt one ninety-two with one ninety-three twenty-five.
Motion by Mr. Sulu.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bachi, is there a question? Yes, sir.
We could ask future board meeting, the President Brown, like this based on his talking point, that, that York and Pleasant Valley, how many houses are down, acquisition, just show him, I think that would be a good update for telling President Brown and the rest of the board.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Matt.
We can certainly do that, Mayor DeGeer. We have that slide deck today, we can show you if you want a quick snapshot, but we can give you a more thorough.
There is.
So just a comment, this, this is the latest voluntary acquisition that we're acquiring on that Pleasant Valley stretch that, that's a significant tributary to the Baldwin Creek watershed. There'll be stream remediation that we'll be doing in the future here, and John, if you go to the next slide, this kind of just shows you the magnitude of acquisition, again, voluntary acquisition here in the city of Parma along that tributary to Baldwin Creek. This is one phase, one piece of a four-phase overall effort. We're under construction at that Del Haven Basin, which is off the screen here at the northeast corner of Pleasant Valley in York. That will help address flooding issues in that intersection and the neighborhoods to the northeast. This piece that you see here with all the property acquisition, which I believe we're getting near the, the low twenties in terms of the residential parcels that we're being able to acquire. This will be a floodplain restoration through this stretch, and then there'll be some culvert upsizing on the residential roads that will come at, at the last phase of this project. So we're, we're able to accomplish this because of the good work of the partners that are involved here in the watershed.
So this is surface flooding mitigation or surface and basement flooding, what is
President Brown, this will be a combination of surface flooding and basement backup issues related to the regional stormwater system in this section of Baldwin Creek.
All right, good, thank you. Suggestions, sir? All right. Yes, if there's no other question and without objection, those are approved.
Solutions one ninety-two and one ninety-three dash twenty-five.
All right, thank you. That concludes our information items. Sorry, action items. We need, we have an information item. Yeah, it's just made here somewhere. Says program management status report and update, July twenty twenty twenty.
For my monthly update, I'll be reviewing the cash flow, our project level KPIs, I'll give you an update on those. The construction updates you will find in your board brochure, I won't delve into those at this time. And then we do have a monthly feature from Doug Lapata, our program manager for the planning and design, that will talk a little bit about some studies that we, study that we're doing and some modeling that we've been looking at as it relates to Edgewater Beach and the overflows that we've had there. For our key, key performance indicators, I just want to report out on the BOP cash flow. This is through the end of July, we did have a couple invoices that our larger dollars did not hit, so that eighty percent of planned is a little below where our target is, but we are well on track, doing well with our BOP total spend of our cash flow under, a little under a hundred and twenty million dollars. Twenty and a half billion of that has been associated with our BOP, our minority, our women, and our small businesses. For our key performance indicators, for the design side on the REF SEMS project, which we just recently spoke to you about, we did complete that design and met that KPI within sixty days of planned. On the southerly fluid bed incinerator number one, the refactory replacement project, unfortunately, we did not meet the KPI with the engineer's estimate within ten percent of the lowest three bids. However, we did award that construction within sixty days of our average planned. On the shoreline consolidation sewer project, we did close the construction contract within ninety-five percent of the original planned. Unfortunately, the BOP goal did fall short. At bid, the contractor had indicated a goal of thirteen point nine six for MNW BE and two point three one for SBE. They did meet and exceed both of those goals, but unfortunately, the SBE goal for the project was set at eight percent and they did fall shy with two point nine six percent at the end.
Correct.
For work orders also on that shoreline consolidation sewer project, we only had uh only seven hundred and twenty six uh plus million, a thousand dollars, sorry. But focused primarily um on our design errors and omissions and differing unforeseen uh site conditions. And I'll have Doug now come up and talk about the Edgewater Beach search tunnel.
Okay.
Good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board. I'm excited to be here today to explain or try to explain a very complicated hydraulic system. Uh, but hopefully you'll see all the work we've been trying to do to get us to a point where we can eliminate the O sixty nine outfall on Edgewater Beach, which is a pretty exciting uh effort for the district.
I'm interested in hearing about that.
So one of our nemesis. Um, so let's start a little bit with a zoom out view of the westerly service area. So this kind of feeds into the flow that would get to the northwest interceptor. You'll see it's a very long service area going all the way to Cam's Corner to the west. Uh, and then we have a big chunk uh near the Walworth Run outfall. And the black area is near the westerly low level interceptor. That piece is actually controlled by the westerly storage tunnel. But the west half and the north half is what we're talking about, uh the northwest interceptor sewer handling. So this area is unique because there's really no culverted streams to offload any flow to. So any bit of wet weather that hits this service area comes to the northwest interceptor and we have to deal with it in these pipes. It also has the northwest interceptor by the beach has a very tight window between the lake elevation and the sewer. So you're kind of cramming a lot of flow uh in a tight window uh along the lake. So the three outfalls that are related to this are O seventy one, uh O sixty nine in the middle of the page. And then OO two, which is right down near the plant, um which is related to the SISTOF or what the CSO treatment facility or the westerly uh chemically enhanced high rate treatment. Now, these three CSOs, um you can see from this graphic, there's already, they already are controlled for seventy one and O sixty nine. So there was no consent decree project related to these. Um, in fact, CSO sixty nine has one of our highest level of controls. Uh, but it is a very public uh location when that overflow does have to occur in larger events. The CSO OO two project will see a significant upgrade. Uh, that one currently has a pretty large volume of of CSO that goes out. And our chemically enhanced high rate treatment project will reduce that greatly. So in order to understand the the hydraulics of the system, we have to cut a profile through this yellow dash line, uh which is the northwest interceptor. And you'll see the difference between the upper system, which is the westerly interceptor that goes to the treatment plant. And then this northwest interceptor, which was really an early generation CSO tunnel. So cutting the profile here, starting on the left hand side of this page starts at one seventeenth and that outfall O seventy one. As flows move to the east, they go past O sixty nine and that red circle is where it would go into the page to the beach. You'll see a large grade change, which is the brown um on the graph here. And then you see the pipe go very close to the ground surface elevation uh as it goes down towards the plant. And if we look at the O sixty nine junction chamber in the upper corner there, this is unique because there's actually a gate covering the overflow. And so in order for the beach overflow to occur, the hydraulics in the system have to rise up to a point where it hits a set point and opens that gate. And then downstream, we have to have the flow go over the SISTOF weers in order to get our settling and our treatment. So that orange line is what sets this hydraulic grade line to be so high in this area. In fact, we have to seal these manholes that you see going above ground here so that the flow doesn't come out of this pipe. So when that doesn't go well, um we have overflows on the beach. And we all get the dreaded email, the dreaded phone call and SSMO has to react in a very quick fashion. Uh, it hits all the major news sites and uh we have a lot of commotion related to an overflow. And this is pretty light one in these pictures. We've seen much worse there. Uh, over the last ten years, we've actually had about twenty of these um for various reasons. Uh, in fact, this last uh we've had three within the last year, which was what got me up on the uh podium here. Um, so that's actually been related a little bit to the the high rate treatment project that's going on. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in the future. Uh, one of the things that we looked at to get the overflows off the beach was to extend that outfall out into the lake. Um, we did this review about three years ago. Um, it was a pretty extensive capital investment uh to do a tunneled option out into the lake, uh multiple shafts. And it still really had a a major O and M presence for us on the beach and it had no water quality or level of service improvements. Uh, the project we knew we had to do was the westerly chemically enhanced high rate treatment. And you'll see everything in the yellow highlight there is what we're building new. Um, and the old uh area is the SISTOF tanks. So we're with this project, we're actually going to have a lot better gate control uh for these large events. So you see on the left hand side is we have four large center channel end gates that we can open to let big events go through. The upper picture on the right is our excess flow conduit and that will, those gates will open downward to release flow during events that we have to. And then the bottom picture is the main weir coming out of the high rate treatment facility as it discharges flow to the lake. So we're working with the high rate treatment team to adjust gate settings and optimize how these work during these large events. So a lot of their evaluation was for the consent decree requirements. But these twenty five year, fifty year events, we'd want to adjust these gates slightly to get the flow through the system. One of the things we're also struggling with now that's almost coming to an end is we actually had to build bulkheads in the northwest interceptor to completely block the flow while we built this facility. So this was obviously a major hindrance to the flow in the northwest interceptor, which is why we've had some of these small events this year as we get those uh spiky storms coming. Because of these bulkheads, we actually have a wedge of water that actually sits in that pipe um and kind of occupies space to the tune of five point three million gallons. So when we get back to back storm events in and this flow can't get pumped out fast enough, uh we have a hydraulic restriction in there as well. So on to the Edgewater Beach surge tunnel. Um, we've been working on this for over a long time, but specifically with the HDR and Applied Science Team for the last year or so. And they've been doing some pretty uh extensive hydraulic evaluations, uh both looking at water, air um and other factors in the system. And so they've used the uh CFD or computational fluid dynamic models uh to model both the water, the air, the velocities in the pipe. Anywhere you see the red color in these graphics, that's bad, that's uh high velocities and you're trying to control that turbulence that's in the system. And so they started looking at different ways to add a tunnel, add junction chambers, uh build storage, control that velocity. And so I'll attempt to show you an animation here of a bad surge issue. And this is in our system now. And you'll see this pipe fill up. And I want you to look at the number one area there first. And you'll see, once we run out of crown space in this big pipe, you see a surge wave kick back to the west. And then you'll see a tidal wave or a surge wave kind of going back, I'll pause it there, right back in the northwest interceptor. And then when that hits the far end and runs out of space, it shoots up. And that's what causes the gate to open and overflow onto the beach. So we started looking at different tunnel options. Uh, we looked at uh adding a baffle drop structure like we have on our other tunnels. Um, and injecting the flow back into northwest interceptor. This option didn't particularly work. Uh, didn't control the air and didn't provide enough volume. We looked at sending that flow downstream a little bit more. Um, the blue line was our first attempt. Uh, we later moved to the orange lines to kind of lessen the community impact. You can imagine Metro Parks, which we're going to talk to um would would have a difficulty with the blue line being in their upper Edgewater parking lot. And where we currently stand now is a tunnel uh that would be about fourteen hundred feet long, ten to twelve feet in diameter. Um, would take the alignment shown on the graphic here. Be about a little under a million gallons of storage, but the recent revelation that we had was to raise this tunnel slightly up so it's not used as storage and then lost. We want it to be open and available, similar to a stream needing a floodplain. Because of the surge in the system, we need an open pipe that can take that surge as it comes back. And so to look at one version, and we ran about a thousand of these different uh model runs, but this one will show you what the the surge wave will look like with it in place. You'll see we we still have that initial surge. Um, but then when we get to this red area, you'll see it kind of disappear and stop. And what it's doing there is it's sending that surge wave up to the new tunnel. And it's kind of dampening that surge wave as it goes upstream. And so as it gets to the top end here, it fills up and then comes back down. And so there's a lot of fine tuning and design that we have to do yet, but that we feel controls this overflow where we could eventually eliminate.
Eliminate.
So these benefits of this project, we're going to have that baffle drop to control the energy, keep uh damage off of our gate long term. We can control the air better and we can put the air in a a space away from the public, uh get it out of the upper Edgewater parking lot. We'll use the tunnel to convey flow, but leave it open for that surge dissipation. Have volume available and we'll hopefully eventually be able to eliminate uh that outfall. Now, all these benefits come with a price, right? Um, so pricing this out at a preliminary basis, uh we're around a twenty million dollar project to do that tunnel, uh including the engineering costs that go with it. So next steps, we're going to finish up our GBS evaluations and those pre designed tasks uh this year. Uh, we're going to confirm that it handles all the storms. Uh, we've run the fifty year storm and it does not overflow or is not needed in the fifty year storm. But there's all different variations that we want to run there. Uh, we're going to coordinate those gate settings with the high rate treatment team and the O and M as they start up the high rate treatment project next year. We do have to add that twenty million dollar uh price tag to our capital plan. And then we'll go out for an RFP to 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 fully design this project and hopefully bid it in two thousand and twenty seven. And we are meeting after Labor Day with the Metro Parks and other stakeholders to talk about the impacts of doing this project within their facility.
Okay.
And that's all I have. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Uh, first question, uh in terms of just the regulatory, are that's our, are we in violation at this point?
No, I mean, this is a permanent CSO outfall uh that meets the consent decree. It was never in the consent decree per se, but we're meeting the requirement.
And so this would be kind of fixing just a a significant environmental impact to the community. Uh, that is an eyesore and affects probably one of, well, I guess there's a beach on the east side as well, but the the west side beach in particular. If there's such a thing that basically closes it or ma- makes warnings have to be posted for a number of days that makes us uh not the favorite people of Metro Park sometimes, I guess.
Well, I think to your to your question, President Brown, that's exactly right. Not only uh are is the beach shut for a certain number of days during the summer, which is the highest use. And this is a public beach. There's, I think, pretty significant equity issues in terms of folks being able to access this area. And as you point out, we're also making efforts on the east side with yeah, Euclid Beach and Villa Angela to help communities address the issues there with our member community infrastructure program dealing with SSOs and other sources of bacteria. So I think the point here is that the district has tried to manage O sixty nine and Doug talks about the issues with the gate settings, the work that we're doing at westerly. But what we're seeing now is to actually eliminate that CSO from Edgewater Beach is an important part of the district's work.
Any other questions, comments? Uh, I think we get it.
Long time coming.
Yeah. Thank you. Square of information items, I guess. Uh, let's move on then. Open session, anything for the good of the order? Nothing. Public session, any subject matter invited by the sign of speak Madam CEO.
They have not, Mr. President.
I, uh, we have no matter for exactly.
Sir, Mr. President, we do not.
All right, then it looks like we have completed our agenda for today. And on that note, I'd be willing to accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi to adjourn. Second by Ms. Chambers. Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.